I'd like to call the meeting order for the Board of Commissioners for Ruby Health. This is our work session. And it will be recorded, it's being televised or whatever we want to call it there. We don't really have anything on the agenda today for public comment, but if anything pops up, John, let us know. I'd like to call it and point to worry. You just do have one change that if it's okay with the board under administrative things, we'll add a C. That Tim needs to present surplus item that needs to be disclosed. Moving on, we'll items. Presentation of the 2021 audit financial statements. Kelly.
Very pleased to present these on behalf of our audit firm, Mike Bailey. The partner is on vacation this week, so he sent me his comments to pass on to the board. He wants us to all hear that the audit procedures went well. Management was very responsive and all the information that was provided was very timely and all of it reconciled to their audit work. So that's always a good note to start on. And so what I thought I'd do is walk you through the actual statements. And so let's start off on page seven with the income statement. It's technically because we're a governmental organization, it's entitled statements of revenue expenses and changes in net position. And so I'm going to call your attention to starting at the top for the operating revenues. And I'm going to be making comparisons between the fiscal year that just ended in 21 versus the prior year 2020. So starting with line, our net patient revenue was up 11. Overall operating revenues were up from 101 million to almost 115. So those are positive. The next comment in the operating expenses, you can see the overall operating expenses were essentially flat from the prior year. So when you combine those two factors, that reduced the operating loss from 20 million down to seven. And then to bring us to a positive bottom line, here's what happens, starting with non-operating revenues. So the tax levies for the debt service for the bonds, it's essentially the same number as the year before. And then the provider relief funds in 2020, you can see there was 7.5 million that we received. That number declined down to 4.8 million in 2021. Interest expense slightly lower. We did pick up some grant money that was classified into this line here. Part of that was state of Washington related COVID relief money in the form of grants came through and presented on that one.
And what about the grant that Tim got?
So yeah, 500,000 is included in that line on them, and that was the Sunderland Foundation used for the Boylton Chiller. And then it's not applicable to this fiscal year, but in this current run, 2022, we did receive an additional 484,000 specifically to help fund the Boylton Chiller. So if you, if you combine all of those factors, you can see third line up from the bottom, the change in net position that would in, if we were a for-profit, that would be considered on our net profit or net gain for the year.
I had a question really that you may not be able to answer, but this looks pretty good. And I'm wondering whether the reason that they assess the company was able to get the information was because of the work that was done these past six months in getting things sort of more in line with the way they should have been?
I think that's a big part of it. Again, a lot of this happened before I arrived, but I was very involved in the finding pieces of putting this 2021 audit together. And I can tell you that our accounting team, even though they were short staffed, they pulled out all the stops and and were very responsive and we, we basically had like a gatekeeper so we could be efficient and get the work done. Anyway, there's more work to be done, but this is a good start. So let me go ahead, I'm going to make some other comments and also cover some of the other pages here. One of the things to note is if you go to the operating expenses, provide the first two numbers, salary from wages plus employee benefits. And then divide them two different metrics owned by the total operating revenues and also by the total operating expenses. By comparison to some of our peer local hospitals, not too far from here, we're actually fairly favorable position. And so that's one of the key things the CFO looks at is, you know, what is our total spend on employee staffing costs? And included in that would also be what we have to pay for travelers. So we've got more work to do, but again, it's not to say it's necessarily an excellent result, it is the comparison with some of our peer hospitals that were doing better.
Can I just ask another question? The fact that the company made a point of this is that they had gotten that is timely. The fact that they mentioned that, is that as compared with previous years?
I don't know the answer to that. So the other thing to point out on the operating statement is again, if you just go down to the change in that position, you can see that that is a substantial improvement over a 10 and a half million dollar bottom line loss. And as the board probably recalls, prior year, the auditors were compelled to put a disclosure in there that they were concerned about ongoing, that the district would be able to continue its operations. That disclosure has gone away and the auditors are very pleased with our current financial position, how we're approaching things. So I'm going to move ahead.
That, that was a major accomplishment getting that off.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. In other words, we wouldn't be able to track any new capital with that kind of a footnote. So let's move on to the balance sheet. So let's start on page five, so flip back to pages. This will be the asset side of the balance sheet. And of note at the top, even though the operating cash position compared with prior year went down, it still was at 22 days of cash on hand. Overall, if you add that, we also have two other lines that are actually cash. So if you go down to the fifth line, assets limited as to use. That's primarily money that we've set aside to pay health insurance claims for our employees' health plan. And there's a small amount down in the middle, 107,000, that's actually also cash designated for retirement plan that affects CMS. And then on the receivable side, there were some improvements, the days of receivable, if you look at the second line, it was at 20 and a half million in 2020, down to 19.4 rounded. So that was an improvement of from 80 days for receivables down to 67. And we do have a ways to go, we're really trying to get eventually to like 50. So more, more work to come on that. And then flipping over to the next page six on the liability side. One real positive thing to point out, if you go down to accounts payable, so the fourth number down, we ended 2021 at 6 million in trade payable, so that's money that we owe to our vendors and suppliers, et cetera. Which if you compare it with the prior year, we improved that by 3.2 million dollars. And by comparison with a lot of other rural hospital organizations, this, we're in very good position on our payables. It's this equates to 18 days of operating expenses, expenses reflected in this payable number. Now, the payable number will go up and down, but based on the other places that I've served at, this is a very favorable position to be in. And then the next line down is, is a net number that's as of the end of December. If you take all of the cost reports that were completed going into this period, the difference between what Medicare owed us back and what we owe them on the payable side is this net number. So at the end of 2021, we owed on a net basis 1.2 million dollars to pay back to Medicare over the course of this year. Other than that, you can see that as James said before meeting, the line long-term debt of the long-term liabilities, so that's reduced in the normal course of our debt service. So those are scheduled principal reductions. Other than that, there's nothing of note to point out on the balance sheet, but since I covered two pages, I'll pause there and see if the board has any other questions.
Where in this matrix is the, I know it's not this amount now, but the nine million that was paid to us in advance for Medicare? And we needed to pay back.
Right. So I'll, I'll point that out. So if you, it's the third line down on this page six, they, they call it CMS advanced payments. Yeah. So at, at the end of December, we paid the nine million down to 6.5. The last number I saw was, was May and it's right around 4 million is the current obligation. So.
Is that the one that we were trying to delay repayment over this period? And was that accomplished or do we have to pay that this year?
Based on what Jim Childers shared with me, the, the prior finance leadership team missed the application window. So, so right now, out of every dollar that Medicare pays us, they're withholding 50 cents or half of it to repay this obligation. So once that goes away, our cash flow will take a nice increase just by hanging on to 100% of the payments.
And is that expected to be repaid then by the end of the year?
Yes. Yeah. So I'm projecting somewhere between November and December, it should be established.
Question?
Yeah.
Long-term liabilities went down by across nine million dollars. Can you explain where that reduction came from?
Yes. So if you look at the second line, the CMS advanced payments, what they did is it basically flipped it up into the current portion. So if you go, if you basically connect the eight million in the right-hand column to the six and a half million in the left-hand column, that's where that transferred.
Too many dollar difference there. What about the other seven? Reduction in long-term?
I'm not tracking them.
Well, you went from in your long-term liabilities, you went from 65 million to 56 million or a difference of about nine million dollars approximately.
So what's your question?
Where the reduction came from?
The balance of the reduction would be from scheduled debt service principal payments on the bonds.
So are we current on all of the bonds?
Yes. Any other questions on the balance sheet? If not, you can circle back if you do think of one. Let's go to page eight, which is cash flow statement. And so in the prior year, starting with the first subtotal, the operations used 13.4 million of cash. In 2021, that number was favorably reduced down to nine million. And then with the state of left column for 2021, that use of money was made up by sources primarily from the next subtotal of 9.3 million, which is the combination of those four line items. So you've got the grant money that came in, you've got the CARES Act, which is a provider relief funds, 4.8. And then we paid back 2.6 million of the advanced money from CMS, which was the original nine million. And then we had tax levies. So the tax levies reflected there would be primarily the EMS tax levy. So the combination again, repeating, provided 9.3 million. And then down below, the next section is known as capital and capital-related financing activities. The biggest source there again would be the 4.2 million, which was the levy for servicing the bonds. And then we had a couple of other positives, one capital grants. So these are grants related specifically towards capital projects. And then the offsets or the uses of money, you've got principal paid on long-term debt, 1.3 million. Interest paid, 3.7. And then we did have a total of almost 1.2 million of various capital projects where we added those to our fixed assets. So those are the main components of the cash flow statement. Any questions on that? Well, that, that completes the presentation. And again, I incorporated the comments that are partnered from Mike Bailey, the outside CPA firm that prepared this report, to pass those on and again, at this, at this time, if the board doesn't have any other questions, I would present it to the board for approval of the one.
Then we send this off to Moody's?
Yeah. So the next step is I will give the green light to our financial advisors to transmit this audit to the two lenders plus Moody's as well. So Coastal Bank and Heritage Bank will be getting this, this afternoon on your approval to release it. And then then after that, Coastal will have time to review the results. And then we will, we have a meeting scheduled tomorrow to go over it.
I think hopefully Heritage should be happy with this.
Mr. Chairman, I make motion we approve the audit.
Second?
Second thing.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's nice to have this done.
Yes.
Did us hard.
Should help us as well with several other important activities. One that comes to mind is the insurance, all of the various insurance renewals. It's a lot easier to go into a renewal with a positive bottom line.
Right. They're looking at it like, are you in danger of closing? It kind of takes a lot.
Real quick question on the loan that we got, maybe it was a USDA loan? Where is that at?
The USDA loan is in pause. I give them quarterly updates to let them know that we want to sometime in the future move forward with that. David Johnson with JJCA come out and update the current administrative team. And I know that Mike and David had some good conversations discussing the Hareville Health. But we're all on the same page now. This team is up to date on what the facility master plan is long-term, or so it can change. And David's aware of, you know, the thoughts of where we might go in the future. So when our finances dictate that we can move forward, Aldridge is still on board as the construction manager and the USDA loan is there waiting.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we, you know, time has gone by, in danger of losing it.
Not as long as I keep them informed. They, in the past, they never went away, but they, that's kind of changed a little bit. So Darlo O'Connor and I stay in constant contact of the, you know, the status of the organization and what the plan is. So no, it's, it's there. We're ready.
They, they also want a copy of the audit?
Tim, have they quoted you an interest rate?
What's that?
Have they quoted you any interest rates yet?
I think it was like two and a half, 2%. It's real low, it's not changing. We're locked in, so. And then I did let Department of Health know because we do have deficiencies on our electrical, that they do want us to, as part of that loneliness for the infrastructure that we might at some point, but they're not holding it because of some of the things that occurred when I first got here that we corrected. You know, they know that we've made some progress, but they're not pushing us to at any, any timeframe to get it going, so.
Just wanted to make sure we didn't lose that one.
What will be the criteria to say now is the time to move forward? Is that only based on finances or is it? Are there some other issues that?
It's, it's mainly financial because we, you know, they don't just give us the money. We have to pay, get things going, put up a lot of capital upfront. And then once we get to certain levels, we can draw out money. So we have to be able to either have a line of credit or a loan or our own money to pay things upfront and then get reimbursed as the project goes.
And so conceivably, if Coastal Bank approves the proposal, then that would give us the capital to be able to start these projects? Or are there still other criteria?
I think it would be, we have to have the management team evaluate all components of the decision and then we would come to the board with the recommendations. Probably too soon to make any predictions.
Tim doesn't have any cheap projects. And so it's kind of like, we'd have to have like $590 in reserve we used to pay for something and then we get reimbursed for it. It'd take a period of time. It's like, at what point do we have that amount of money sitting that's not, you know, needing somewhere?
Right. And Curtis and Mike will probably share later on the clinical side of the, the world that we're operating in right now has been majorly changed in the wrong direction in terms of a whole list of things. And that's not really my area of expertise, so I'll defer to them. But it's, it's definitely on my radar screen, so it has a, has an impact of the CFO is going to be a lot more conservative before we go out and spend capital until we get a better fix on how this is going to stabilize. Because it impacts our staffing and our ability to take in patients and a bunch of other things.
Kelly?
Yeah?
I've not heard about this since you came on board and I'm wondering if I can get her up. At one point, we were looking to possibly get some money from the state association, Washington State Hospital Association sometime around July for hospitals that were in financial.
Distress. Yeah, it's still on our radar screen. Yeah. The window for applying for that money has just opened up in July.
So just for applying?
Just 15 hospitals, $8 million for distressed hospitals.
Yeah. So we, we will be pursuing that. We will have to get some guidance on how the qualifications work, so.
Cassie might be your contact person with the hospital association. She's, she was the one who says, don't forget about this when we were talking to her about a few things.
Yeah, Jim and I, Jim Childers, who already left, he and I moved. We got a road map in place here.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You have a request?
We do, yeah. So.
Did they approve it?
Yeah.
We approved the audit. Now he has a capital request. Yeah. And in, in keeping with our approach here as the management team, we want to keep the board fully informed and get your approval on any of these major capital expenditures. I don't know, has everyone had a chance to read through this? If not, we can go through the various places here. But I think probably Curtis might be the best person to tell us about the narrative part of it, if I can give you the summary. But this is our bread and butter for supporting all the industries that happen. And so basically from a financial standpoint, what we did with the help of the vendor, in this case Olympus, looked at a return on investment, kind of, if you will, what would happen if our existing equipment just broke on us? And we had to start from scratch. How, how fast would it, how soon could we get a payback on this $260,000 for the equipment? And based on the, based on our current level of procedures that happen per month, which is just under about 100 scopes that are done, we would, we would get a payback in three months off of this. And then another way to look at it is from a defensive standpoint. If your surgery is one of our more profitable departments and will become more profitable over time, we definitely want to have this equipment. We don't want to be at risk for the existing equipment to go down on us because it would be a bad way, it would be poor service for the community to start with. And then from a financial standpoint, it's better to be proactive than not wait for things to occur. So I'm recommending that we go ahead with this suspension.
Curtis, you have anything?
We could up the stubble, what we're doing now, which would help with the backlog. We have a huge backlog of colonoscopies. And of course, we want to keep all our people here and not go out to other sources. The tower currently has ended life beyond servicing. We've already had to replace certain things on it and we're having to go into Amazon to find pieces for it, which is a little bit alarming, particularly because it is our bread and butter. The other particular thing that's neat about this tower is it will work with our current neurology tower, which is good to have. So we have a temporary backup if something happens with this new tower. So as we look at replacing equipment, we're also trying to look at redundancies. So we have a backup plan in-house already. This is really easy. It's a patient satisfied to get these things done. One island totally endorse this. It's separate outside her surgical suite, so it's, it's a good monetary. And again, the return on investment in three months is, is, is a always helping.
We, I mean, it's a lost revenue, you know, happen.
And we can't afford for it to keep breaking. So downtime has given us a non-confidence in the community as we have things drop on us.
How quick is the proofness? How quick is the worry?
Yeah, I don't know the answer. I don't know the answer. The part of that would be a survey of they have to make sure that we can get the, the physical equipment through our doorways, through our hallways, into the room. So I would have to follow up on that. I don't know.
But I, I might as well just help them launch.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a long. You know, it's not, it's not a long process, but.
I think we got a weekend.
Yeah. Yeah, we did on the desk.
So I mean, I don't know if it's something that the board needs to approve as part of the vote.
It's a good idea for us to.
Good idea, which you don't have to, but if you, I mean, if he's let, if he wants to go forward with it, we'll go forward.
Okay, any motion to approve it?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Surgery department, thanks you.
And, and today as of this second thing, we're looking good with our general surgeon who will be using this equipment. Uh, Dr. Corbett, I'm wondering if we, we've just made him an offer and uh, he's, he's saying it looks good. He's got to talk to the boss today. As soon as he talks to her, I'm thinking, oh, geez.
And where are they coming from?
Um, he's coming from Arizona and she's in Washington.
DC? So she's coming home?
She's coming home, so she, she, um, she's really excited about coming here and saying, man, she got a chance to talk with her. And they deal, uh, with both of them.
Yeah.
She gave them to her and spent a couple hours with them. So she's very excited about.
To find them a house?
That's kind of a long story. I showed them a lot of different areas and they were really impressed with them. They really want to build their own home. So they're looking to either get a smaller home that they can live in for a couple of years and around, if they happen to find one that fits all their needs. For delightful people. She is not applying for any position here. But she is a family practice doctor. So there's potential at some point maybe of having an additional provider.
About two years from now when the children get to be up a little bit, um, she'll come to work. The children to be.
Anything else, Kelly? You? Uh, no. Yeah, thank you all for letting me go first. Scoot out for another reading.
So what are the cash on hand today, days?
Uh, thirty.
Thirty.
Yeah, and we expect that to go up between now and next payroll. We just did our payroll funding yesterday. So that is included in the thirty days.
And does that, but, but that doesn't yet, when, when will the pay raises uh, be reflected in the day's cash on hand?
That would start in August.
No.
Yeah, that obviously I think so. It goes into effect, um, July thirty first.
Well, I'm really excited about that too. So congratulations.
So, yeah, that will be very, very positive. Thank you all. Good job.
Good job.
You sound like a, um, in an article to the news that's also.
Curtis, we don't have you on the agenda for any specific thing and I don't know what your timeframe is. You have some time to be here with us. Welcome to be here. I didn't know if it's something that you can bring forward that wasn't on the agenda.
No, I think the, the one thing is we're all talking about, um, there's been several meetings for the Northwest Region Hospitals. We're all in the same boat. Combination staffing shortages and borders. Uh, it's become quite an issue. So we're meeting twice a week now. That's how this work and try and normalize the region. And we're also working with the unions and hospital association to determine a letter writing campaign to our legislators on support. Uh, because we've got running into the situation where we've got patients that are not necessarily be in the hospital, but there's no place for them to go. Uh, our retirement communities are, are having the same issue as for hiring staff, but it's also becoming a risk game. As our population starts to age a little bit, they're running out of physical locations along with staffing. We've got several orders that we've reached out across six different states to find placement for it and have been unsuccessful. Uh, so it is a nationwide thing that right now in particular, it's hitting the Northwest Region really hard. And it's now starting to cascade down to the Southern Region. As all hospitals start to counter that.
Do we have, how many orders should we have right now?
Right now in our hospital, we have five.
And then what do we hear Providence had a hundred?
A hundred.
Um, and it, what's, what's really alarming is our trauma one centers who never go onto BURD are going on to BURD. Uh, that's very concerning because we've got, there's running out of physical.
Yeah, I heard children going on to BURD.
St. Joseph's gone on to BURD, Heart Review has been on to BURD. They get off as quick as they can.
Yeah.
Uh, because that's part of your trauma line. But when you get to a certain point, you just can't handle anything else. Uh, and that's a concern as well. An example of it hit us locally is we had an individual who needed to cath lab. Took four days to get that to happen. That's alarming. That's, that's alarming. Starting to get that in, in the medical field, we're all starting to go, okay. You know, we're waiting for the shoe to drop. And so finding staff is another issue. Trying to get people, I have no problem getting applications for new nurses that have no experience. Problem is we created such a, we've got such a staffing shortage right now. I don't have the bandwidth to train these nurses. So one, I can't afford to lose a nurse who's taken a five patient load to do a pre-precipitation. And two, I don't want to take a new nurse and disillusion them and not have a good foundation. We don't want to put our, our future nurses at risk. So it's a quandary right now how to balance our needs. And unfortunately has led to having results on travelers again, but we're doing it just, you just. Shouldn't use words I can't say with my hearing. We're doing our due diligence to make sure that we're not bringing on more travelers than we absolutely need. I think Kelly talked a little bit about payroll being a little bit higher this month, uh, paper and that is expected due to the overtimeing that staff is putting in. And that can only continue so long because I worry about burnout. Staff relying on it. An example today is if we not had reserves and staff pick up extra shifts, uh, day shift on men's surgery, but had one C in me. I mean, that's how peace working things together. Um, staff are doing a good job. Uh, we're still trying to send support to other departments, which is really good. Partners are helping each other. I mean, OD is going to be, ED, adventure is going to ED and PAC, he's coming out to, to ED. We're all switching around and helping each other. Uh, the ICU manager has acted as the charge nurse the last two days. And so it gives you an idea how precarious we are and COVID keeps raising its ever the head and dropping people out of here and, and people's lives go on. There's FMLA, it's a movement that needs to creates a stressful situation to when it's already, you stress the system as we can get.
It's a census town.
We're holding it twelve. And that's what a lot of hospitals are doing now is because they don't have the staff, they're having the whole census down. Uh, so it, it, it's a self fulfillment prophecy which is getting worse because we just can't. I mean, I have nineteen beds. I'd love to be able to put on nineteen to work. I just don't have it. And I committed myself and done patient care over the weekend when we showed nurses. It's just. Yeah.
So we have a ward member that's a nurse and really qualified. They can come in and do a mentorship and train, you know, some new nurses.
Was that a volunteer?
The foundation president also.
It's, it's a, it's a committee that.
Actually, it was very interesting. We have an ARM E, um, not AR, yeah, an assessor. Anesthesiologist who is an RN as well. And she volunteers here. She works and helps, floats around and she works probably two days a week, eight hour shifts. Totally volunteer and she's boarded as a nurse. So she's an active nurse. So that's nice. That helps.
Like I said, it's, it's good to see even as difficult as it is, I've seen a lot of morale boosting, even though you're faced with kind of some burnout. But it's like assuming people are stepping up.
They're stepping up and again, our, which is, is our, not ironic, but it is, is pleasing to see what kind of morale people we have. Our, for lack of better word, age caps and everything does continue to go up. The nursing metrics go up. Um, I just sent copies of the thank you grant. It was fabulous. It was fifteen different thank you grants for patient stay, for operation, and then went into our swing back program, which she had nothing but three words to say for it. Um, I got to take care of her when I was nursing. So that's, we developed a report, uh, there as well, but good things are happening. So the care is not slipping, uh, despite the shortages and that's our objective.
Have you been able to, no, I, I saw that today, I think it's today that there were no patients in swing beds.
See one more time.
I, I saw that there were no patients in swing beds, right, today?
There are none. No, they've all been discharged.
And, uh, will that continue? Do you have the staffing to be able to, as long as you maintain the twelve, uh, to take patients in terms of swing days?
We don't right now, uh, because it's regular queue. So that's a problem we're running into, uh, reaching out, trying, researching, uh, we're putting out the bonus structure to try and get applicants. Uh, and the bonus structure is being limited to two years minimum of care. Uh, because I, I don't agree in paying a bonus to new nurses when we have the investment in training them, which I can't do at this point in this. They need to get some time. Uh, because we don't want to lose week one. I've had two nurses go down FMLA. I've got another one that's moving. The military has taken quite a few lately. So we're not losing nurses because of the job. It's, it's life circumstances that are taking out of you.
There is a question on the board. Having to do with orders. And I don't know when you, that would be for you or?
This is, this is where it gets really difficult. Um, and that, that's a little outside my scope. I will tell you that once they're medically cleared and a order, um, the pay is very minimal. You get a little bit of pay, but not much. And you have to go out and get a certification for it. And that's where you and that's, they'll go out and say, okay, this is a border medically cleared. Most insurances will not pay for a patient that's medically cleared for pending placement or they're pending, uh, the test. So it's, it's very tricky that way. I get a hundred dollars and I get some kind of admin day, but it, it doesn't cover the expense. And that's what gets really hard. You know, you look at prob better at a hundred. That's a lot of nurses to cover. So thankfully we don't have a whole bunch. But it, it does take up rooms and we're not getting full reimbursement for the room rates. That's why we've got to write to our congressmen, legislators and the unions and Washington State House, uh, Hospital Association are putting together talking points about, we would actually got a meeting the day next week. Yes, yeah. So we're, we're meeting on this, realizing that it's got a, it's not something we can do, but it's all the hospitals collectively have to step up.
And be good at calling once you have that, calling to keep the board on what we can do individually.
Absolutely, absolutely. But if you know any nurse friends, that's what we're trying to reach out to now is, is talk to them and see if we can get them to send someone. And haven't called, texted me directly because I'm very sure it's busy. Uh, with the NF one. And so that way I can help facilitate it through capacity.
Thank you. My, on the agenda here is more revolutions. Do we have any? And are there any contracts that we need to review? So we're going to skip over the thing where we're not allowing anybody off the board. Credits through thirty-two. All in favor? Okay. So we do need to talk about filling Nancy's position, which basically her, um, the reservation will take effect the end of September. And so we'd be swearing the new member for October one. And basically we're going to have to go out and advertise, you know, to somebody. What I did have with Connor pull up is I think that if he puts it out there on the internet, you know, as promoting the fact that we want to fill the slot, we have to be clear that there's no longer districts. It's Island, it's Whinby Island. Oh, not Island County, but would be Island, anywhere on the island. And the, I wanted to include the pay structure, which is dictated by the RCW. Uh, Connor's going to get the latest, greatest one because this basically says we get ninety dollars a go per meeting.
No.
A day.
Per day.
Yeah.
Regardless of the number of meetings.
Per day. And, well, you can make ninety dollars a day teaching on the nurses.
There's new deal. I think you're working on these days here.
And I think it's gone up a little bit from that. And then it had a cap of commissioner did not make more than eight thousand, six hundred and forty dollars a year. Like I said, I'd like to make sure that we send the thing out to the community that we have that in there. Uh, I wasn't down to board. Do you think it'd be a good idea to put in our bylaws so they could read those? Because in our bylaws for the hospital, it also talks about all the different committees, functions of the board. I think it's really important that they would read that. Make sure.
Like my job description, if I'm applying for the job, I like to.
Yeah, and it is a, normally it's a six-year term. But in filling the position for Nancy's, uh, they would serve until, uh, December of twenty twenty-five. But they would have to run in November. You know, to be able to onboard again in six. But like I said, I wanted, and this is the other one. I don't know if people have seen it. I'll get right to you. Is that Mike actually had put together, uh, this little brochure here. It's on, uh, board and CEO decision makers. And I thought it was really good. Uh, and then it has the, also the code of ethics. I don't know if you've seen it. I'll pass it around, but I would like to make sure that the board's, you know, okay with that going on in the internet also.
Yeah, I believe the person who will be appointed to this chair needs to run for election next year. And then that carries into twenty twenty-five. And then they have to run again in twenty twenty-five.
I, I think it was something about that, that, um, it just seemed like there was a lot of.
You run for an election to finish the term that you've been appointed to. And then you have to run up again when that term is still up.
So I'll get with Connor and if need be, you know, we can call Brad Bird. Just to get confirmation on that, to make sure we're clear.
I think you have to run again until twenty twenty-five. It would take your, no, if you're.
I had read somewhere that they would complete her term, but she may be right to. Like I said, I, I can't swear on this.
But I'll, I'll get that before we advertise.
Yeah, so like I said, you know, we want to get this out. But we'll clarify that.
Yeah, at least it's what I experienced when I came on board and I think Eric did also. When he came on the board, just.
I thought his was the remainder of a year.
He can probably tell you.
How'd that work?
Yes. Yeah, it was the remainder of the year. So next year I had to go to election.
I think there were only one year left on that position. So we'll, Connor and Mike will verify that.
RCWs.
So, I mean, time wise. It'd be nice that if we could get people to apply, send their resume and all that so that at the, at the next work session, which would be in August, that we would have collected all this. That gives them a month to get all the resumes in. And then at the work session, we can look at them and everything's. To get all the resumes in, and then at the work session, we can look at them and everything set up timeframe because. We want to have it at a open meeting like this, where we interview one, you know, one at a time. Or do we want to do two commissioners interviewing and switch off, you know, I just try to protect. Their privacy also. I'd like the feedback from board.
I don't think it should be on board because we don't think their interview should be open to the public. I don't think that's appropriate. So I think there either needs to be a. Committee or a couple of people appointed to commissioners, interview them and screen them and come down to the final. Two or three, and then bring it to the board for a decision.
Seems to me that in the past, we've had a couple of board members, but those from the state from the foundation. Or in the, from the community that were also part of the interviewing group. I don't, I don't recall precisely, but I thought that there was more than just the two people. When, when I applied. For an M T C. Because I think Rich Spear, we had him, one of them, I think was president of the foundation at the time. Something like that, so that there was somebody other than the commissioner.
Yeah, so, I mean, we could possibly set about, well, we have different rooms down here, two commissioners, could be one room. Two at another room. Two there to interview candidate A and send them down to the other commissioners. Say applicant coming there, and I think you're right, though, I think that, you know, it'd be very important, I think that. You know, like Curtis could be there, you know, it should be admin people, along with somebody representing the medical staff. It's up to the board to kind of put that together, what you'd like to see.
When I was interviewing Trish and Helen, the two that were in there, with Helen being from the foundation. Trish was.
And I mean, we have to make sure that it doesn't look as though there's cherry picking of trends from. Commissioners, and that it is sort of an open. Process.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you know, privacy with the candidates. Set up where, you know, you had a couple and a couple, I mean, I think all the commissioners. Need to be involved in that interview process where I get to know the candidate. Well, when I interviewed, I think it was about five years ago. It was before the entire board, and every one of the members in the board had prepared questions. That they gave, but it was the entire board, it was just the board that I interviewed. How do you feel about inviting, you know, some other member, you know, like I said, we wanted to invite, you know. Somebody representative of the medical staff, nursing staff. Like I said, I I want to hear everybody's.
Well, that's fine, but they would not be.
They don't know about.
They would not have a vote.
No.
I think it it'd be important to have some, to offer the medical staff to send a representative to be a part of the interview. Realizing they don't have a vote, but their opinions would be heard.
Yeah, I mean, that's. We have to make the decision.
You're talking about like the chief of surgery?
I am talking about asking the medical staff who they would like to send, because I'm not targeting any one person.
Right, I don't hear you, you said chief of surgery, Dr. Johnson.
Well, there again, it's like, I mean, we do the interview, if we, like I said, our workshop, to me, that's what we would set up. You can see all the resumes, and then we set the timeframe up with the interviews. And then our board meeting. That's when we would bring up motion to appoint certain person.
I think we're being very optimistic, and I love it, that there'll be enough people that we can do this, we might only have one person or two people, whatnot.
I think, well, there again, it's like, we try to get it out to people, it's kind of like, you know, it's time to step up. You know, we have a lot of people with opinions and complaints. You know, and it's time for, you know, that to stop, we need to have people stepping up, and I know right now that. I heard four candidates. I don't know that you get those applicants in, but I think the sooner we get it out there in the public. We start seeing the resumes come in.
I think I would recommend that we get it out to the public ASAP and set a deadline on. August first for their applications to.
Yeah. Okay, it's basically, it's okay with the board, we need to have somebody, it's like, I said, okay with the board that Connor. Was the one that receives all of the applicants.
Yeah, there was, I got a question today about whether or not. The people who were applying for the position, whether those resumes would be available to the public. Or whether. That would be something that would be closed. I'm not sure that, how that.
The public is not choosing, the board is, so I don't think those applications. That's my opinion.
Again, we have to ask that question, I guess.
Yeah, I don't know about privacy issues and, you know. That you don't submit people's resumes and things. On the flip side of it is, you know, if we make it a decision that doesn't work out in the long run, then. Maybe somebody from the community would have known something about, you know, it it gets really complicated. But I I do want to ask a question, James, you said that you. Were interviewed by the entire board, and that had to be an open meeting?
It was an open meeting, yes, and with regard to what Nancy just said, I agree with her, I think there's absolutely no reason why we should be showing the public. Resumes that are submitted to us in confidence.
Yeah, they wouldn't apply, they might not hold anybody, no, and then maybe the final candidate.
We might also be pleasantly surprised by a large number of people that that want to join our research, so. You never know what you're going to be, be looking at. Sometimes if you do have a large numbers, we've had large numbers at times in our business, and we've had to kind of almost speed date, so to speak, that you have. Will will interview you for a half an hour, or forty-five, or even fifteen minutes, fifteen, twenty minutes or something, and then. Have other people come through and you you see what it is, and you have other people come back for a second interview.
When I interviewed, there was five people that were applying.
Yeah.
It might be. I would just sort of have some suggestions in terms of what type of background. Would be helpful to have in terms of commissioners, I mean. Someone with a financial background, or a medical background, or a building background, or.
Legal background.
Yeah, or legal background, but, you know, those, I mean, at least in the past, have been very helpful. As we have discussed various issues, and you, your focus on finance and things has been. Very helpful over these, and and also the fact that you. Were in pharmacy here for like twenty-nine years. Yeah, so. As as we make suggestions of who might. Want to apply for this sort of job, including the fact that there are meetings that go on during the daytime. And board meetings and, you know. You know, the work sessions, and and, you know, people are complaining that, you know, you don't have. Somebody who's got a job can't be a board member, well, that's part of the problems of of. Finding commissioners who are available at these various times, and something that they need to consider, whether now is the time to apply.
Connor, on that note, would you make sure when we go to put out the information form, that we also include a sample. Of like the July board, you know, the calendar that we have. That that way they can see kind of what is on there. Do the commissioners want to actually ask a a question now? It's like, okay, so we're putting it out there for them to apply. Do you feel that it's appropriate to say, like, James, do you have a question that you want to present to them, have them think about addressing their resume? You know, it's like, your your question would be, well, what what do you think you're going to bring to the board, or, you know. Does each commissioner want to kind of submit a question? Does that make sense?
Not that the application would.
Well, I'm saying, I mean, that way they they would include it in the resume ahead of time. But just want it out there.
Well, if, if we want to ask a question like that, it should be part of the application form.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's a.
Name, address, phone number, email. And we'll just sit down, floor, and we'll go from there.
And Connor, you can kind of, I mean, rough draft something that we can all take a look at, but I think we need to disclose to them, you know. The the pay.
Yes.
And all the different meetings, and to make sure that they know that, you know. Main two things is our our board meeting and our workshop are definitely during the day, and almost all committees are too. And that most committees are, and that, you know, each commissioner will usually serve at least two committees.
I'll be sure, as that goes in the process, to touch base with, we've shown draft work, and of course, I've heard before.
Yeah, and like, so I'll get with you and Mike and get ahold of Brad and put some of those stuff, definitely.
My concern is that, it's almost two months ago, I submitted my resignation, and we're just now at this point. We've done the therapy, we've asked her, we've asked her to get people through the process.
Yeah, we've been trying to get the word up, I've been, you know. I hope you would nile on the grieving, okay? Mark, can I ask comments, what would you like to see? That I think that if we can get this out there and get the things back in August.
Well, I was, I was gonna throw a ringer into all of this, and wonder, bring up just the question of whether or not. As we should consider increasing the size of the board. And that. When we're seeking applications to replace Nancy, that there might be other opportunities in the future. For other positions if we decide to expand the board.
Okay, well, that's something else that, I mean, with Connor, and we'll dig into that real quick, even like talking to Brad. And then we'll probably get back to you in the first week, that it may be something that will.
If we have only one or two people applying, then it seems like it should be a non- increasing board. If we have ten, twelve people applying, then we might want to say, well, is this the time we should increase the size of the board? So I think seeing how much interest there is on the island, fulfilling my position. Would be a key to where we go from there. I do a lot of work about changing the size of the board, if we can't even get. A number of people to apply to this position.
Well, we certainly had a lot of, a lot of people wanting us all replaced some months ago, so. Maybe you don't.
You don't.
Showing up, wanting to get involved.
I'll get with Connor and Denver and Mike and get back to them.
Sounds good.
Anything else on? Eric, you have anything else you want to add?
Nope, nope.
So we're going into health tech update, it says health tech representatives.
So I think health tech just continues to send in consultants, and we just received, like, today, a. It's one from Rachel, until it's been, I think, till it's on there. So we'll be looking to that one, and also, I think, I think that's it in this, is there anybody at home?
I can't read.
No. I think that would be the major update, and Neil will be here at the next work session, one in the private office.
Connor, can you read what's left?
Public vote in an election, can candidates voluntarily offer to share their resumes all in place? The public disaster transparency from the commissioners, and this is part of transparency.
Okay, so we're gonna have an update from our leader at Health Tech, and I'll just.
Yes, yes, it would be.
And we've had our financial update. Now we're into executive updates.
So I don't have a lot, I don't know, this has been a long meeting with you going over that. We do continue to interview providers, there's, you know, we had Dr. Phoebe. Dr. King in here, so offers have went out to them today, tentative offer, both of them, the general surgeon's looking good. Dr. King is not looking so good, and I'm just just getting that as we were sitting here, just before I came for meeting. So I'll have to talk to her and see what, what we can do. Help her choose us over another offer that she has. Ryan, Beth will be here next week, he's a HR candidate, so that's kind of really moving on there. And then the, the raise that the board approved for our SS workers and our protect workers is. Going over really, really well, lots of employees coming back saying, thank you very much for what we're, what we're doing. They're just very, very happy. Couple of doctors by my office already is walking in front of the door this morning, got stopped. Raises are going out anywhere from five percent to sixteen percent for our employees, so that we can better compete now. And in our new world, order, if you will, or the new normal, we're going to continue to. Have to struggle to compete with wages and workforce, and so this will allow us to do that.
Can you touch on the status of the Freeland Clinic?
Oh, yeah, Kathy, let's just say, I probably shouldn't go over name, we have a. A P A of an internal medicine position that we are discussing, joining us. Looking really, really good, and they were going into the Royal Health Clinic in Freeland. And we would also put our behavioral health service that will be offering in there. So right now, we're. We'll be talking to them, and just as we were all down here, both of these candidates would like to talk to us, sometimes it's leaking about three minutes.
Would you be bringing a provider from Clinton back out then to the Freeland Clinic?
We can, we can, possibly. We can, we can possibly. We just have to have enough providers in both, you know, we can't strip to a plan to move them back to Freeland.
Do we have more than one walk-in provider?
Just one, I think, down there, no one.
I would suggest one walk-in provider and one, uh, or walk-in, yeah, provider and then one scheduled walk-in and, I mean, she's so busy that she is out until September.
Yeah, I don't know if we can move anybody around, we're just not able to fly that.
So don't forget that when providers come in, that there is a south end of the island also.
Where, where is that? Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, we will. We will not forget, and, and we just have that shortage of providers, so that's, that's why we're have recruiting right now and making offers that, because primary care is what, what is really, really needed, so there's one internal medicine clinic, yeah, with, with that.
But I think that also is a reason that we don't understand, one of the six years of this term, to protect the south end. So now we're into Tim.
Yeah, do you want any other updates or just?
Whatever you wanna give us.
Um, well, we did have, um, our second meeting, it's kind of the new kickoff meeting with the IAFF for, um, EMS today. And so we have restarted those negotiations, I think it's gonna go fairly well. Um, and we'll be having a couple more meetings to start the economic side of that negotiation, so just an update on that, um. We do have a Ursa grant for five hundred thousand dollars that we have already been awarded. It was awarded to us for diagnostic imaging to build out the CT and MRI suite, which obviously we can't do because to do that, we would have to supply, um, another three and a half million dollars to build out that space. But because we have the need for the floral remodel, the CT remodel and the new X-ray in the existing space, now that Siemens has come up to provided us equipment that will fit in the existing space. There's still work and money that has to be spent to, to make that happen on the electrical side and the infrastructure side. So we feel pretty good that that money could be put towards that. Um, because Siemens had some money there, but when they renegotiated the contract, that money went away. Um, so that means that we would be stuck, you know, paying for that, um, at a time when we really are not trying to spend that kind of money. Um, so that Ursa grant will help support because it was for diagnostic imaging. It will help support that cost and possibly, um, pay for some money that we already spent on getting the mobile MRI here. The pad and the electrical on that, so that was some good news that we are solely working towards. So I just wanted to update the board on that a little bit. Um, the only other thing I can have at this moment is, we do have a, um, piece of van, it's a nineteen ninety-seven Astro van that, um, has over four hundred thousand miles that we would like to dispose of, um, I do have a thought on donating it to kids, cars for kids, they basically come get it, no cost to us. And it benefits children, so if they sell it, that money goes to support the, the, you know, young kids, so with the board's approval, um, I'd like to be, to be able to move forward with eliminating that piece of equipment from our assets.
Does it need a replacement? Do you need another vehicle or?
Not at this time, no.
We have to approve mostly all sorts of things, but if somebody would wanna make a motion to that effect, that not only would surplus it, but that would allow them to donate it. We need to include that.
It has how many miles on it?
Over four hundred thousand, and if, and if, when they do sell it and give that money, I thought it matters, but we do, there's a donation tax break that we would see some of that.
Yeah, and you're not gonna get much for it, we're trying to sell ourselves and action it off, and I think it's a good cause and fit together.
It's one of the ones that you like and that'll let you value it.
I would, we, uh, allow the van with over four hundred thousand miles on it to be donated to, what was the name, Cars for Kids? To Cars for Kids.
Like the second? Any discussion? All in favor? Our next board meeting is Thursday, July twenty-first, right here at twelve o'clock. Meeting for executive sessions, we had it off the agenda, but. So would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
Go to adjourn.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
You know, this information.
Bye, Derek.